Rich.
Uh, Rich Reed, a member?
Jerome Racine, a member?
Saniki Chalk, a member?
Terry Waite, a member?
Bill Larson, ex-official.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so next item on the agenda will be the view and acceptance of the minutes in the September fourteenth meeting.
I have one general point that I can be more specific on, but there are about a dozen times we use the third-person plural pronoun "they," and it's not always clear what the "they" refers to.
Yes, I would agree. I think we should change those "they's" to "we's."
To the proper...
The "we's" or something?
"We's" or the proper...
Yeah.
Just to give it more clarity.
You're absolutely right. I made that same note.
So, for example, on line thirty-seven...
Well, even line thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yes.
Thirty-three is three of the, three "they's" should be three of "we's."
They need to get across they can afford the things they are buying.
Right.
Maybe just the first "they" could be, who do we mean?
Yeah.
So, uh, what did you mean there when you said?
Well...
"They" need to get across.
What I mean is, uh...
Who's the "they"?
We as a planning board and Board of Select need to get across the idea that, you know, there's only so much we can afford. That's who the "we" is. The "we" is the official bodies. Can't just spend money.
Right.
But anyway, that's...
So, either "we" or "planning board slash selectmen," or if you meant more than just the planning board?
Focus this question.
Uh, that, uh, right, I did.
Hello?
Morning, sorry.
Morning.
Morning.
Thirty-six, I mean, we can go through this or I can just talk to Sharon later. Uh, there are like about a dozen of them. Mr. Deco said, "They don't want their budget going up and down." "They" being...
The town.
The town.
What line was that?
Thirty-six. I mean, there's a...
Okay.
I've got my home. Here.
I've guided thirty-seven, forty-three, sixty-six, seventy-eight, seventy, seventy-five, eighty...
Here's some...
Eighty, seventy, eighty-eight.
You have an agenda?
And maybe I can just go. I, I mean, it's, I know, I think, what it was, but...
You're familiar enough to figure it out?
I think so. If I work with Sharon, maybe afterward I can...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read through the minutes and make any changes.
It's unclear. We could just see who made, go talk to whoever made it, Mark, and see who they really meant.
Um, line thirty-seven, just a simple thing. Um, as you read to the end of the sentence on the chart...
"I they."
Yeah.
The "I."
"I they."
"I they."
They try to show a level on the chart.
That was, that was the only thing I could see.
Right.
My red dot.
Line twenty-eight, uh, does twenty-eight need to assist the town instead of to assist...
Oh, assist it, yeah.
Is that assist the town?
Mm-hmm.
Should be.
Needed to assist the town. I'm not sure even that makes sense, to assist the town in its explanation, was that a point?
Does that mean to assist the town?
Now, I'm getting at a critical point. I've heard that these are needed to...
Support.
Support the town, so...
Yeah, and whatever you, the idea is to help us explain to be...
Support would be better.
The town being the town administration or government. Sometimes we use town as that in that capacity, and sometimes we hear using town as the people of the, of the towns. So, maybe to...
The town administration.
To assist the town administration would, would work, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the way you want to put it?
Uh, to assist the town administration or the town, how, whether, how we want to describe yourself, yeah. Uh, sixty-six, um, I know you said this, Bill, and I don't want to change the record from what you said, but do you really want to say that the town is forty-plus years old and it's falling apart?
No.
I think you're trying to be a little bit more specific than that.
Right.
That, that physical plant or...
Yeah, well, let's say, and the infrastructure is aging.
Yeah, yeah. We keep the sense of what was...
Right.
What was meant. Since I'm on a grammar kick, I'm line eighty-five responding to the planning board needs to tell them what its priorities... Uh, it's collective now, it can go either way, but the nun has taught me one way. I feel the sting in my hand. Or the pull of my ear.
It's gonna be a generation that didn't feel that. It's very sad.
Sad.
It is very sad.
Uh, again, in, in the same line or vein, one oh-one, maybe a comma after studies and such, no capital S. You get John Crye's studies, such as the bridge over the, over the, over the dam.
Mm-hmm.
Terry, uh, line one oh eight, you asked, a cash service shows up as a... I'm sorry, I just don't understand the context of that. I, I think I know what you're trying to say, but...
I don't think "service" is the word, no.
Yeah.
So, you asked if a ca...
Outlay?
Service.
Payment?
So, obviously, you're looking at...
What were you asking? That the, that the cash?
No, um...
It was the actual...
There was a column on the...
Yeah.
Right, it's the cash for cash, right?
The cash payment. So, it's, it's not "a," it's the, the...
I'd like to see the...
Ask.
It was referring to one of the columns in the CIP.
Yeah.
That was the actual cash on hand that you were asking about on the far right?
Yep.
Was that where you were...
Okay, the, the cash reserve, that's what it is.
Cash reserve?
Reserve, yeah.
To ask that the cash reserve...
If, ask, if, is that what you meant? Was it a question? If a cash reserve shows up as a yearly amount, or, or are you stating?
I was asking whether it showed up as yearly amount, and Mark declared that it was total. I was asking, I wanted it to show up as a total, and I wasn't sure what was showing up. Probably asked if cash reserve shows up as a yearly amount.
Yearly total amount or total? Do you get the word "total" in there?
Uh...
Up to you. You said it?
No, I'd, I'd leave it as yearly amount.
Do you want service or reserve left in?
Reserve, yeah.
Reserve, okay.
Mr. Waite asked if cash reserve shows up as a yearly amount.
Mm-hmm.
And then if, um, instead of a, if lease on, if lease on an item is also yearly amount. A bond shows up as one big lump sum.
So, it looks to me like it was three questions asked?
Well, I think it was setting up a scenario.
Mm-hmm.
Your concern seemed to be that the bond issue shows up as a lump sum and not when it's being paid.
That's right, and in particular, year.
Yeah.
And we're showing how much actually it costs per year in, in the terms of a lease, and we're asking show how much it costs per year in terms of cash, but yet, when you get a bond, it all shows up right here, even though it's gonna be paid over seventy years, yeah.
It all shows up in that year, that's right.
I don't know if you can gather that from what I said here. If cash reserve shows up as a yearly amount, a lease on an item is also a yearly amount, a bond shows up as one lump sum. Mr. Deco will import the sheet into the twenty-year plan and will show at the bottom of the year to...
Terry, let's, um, just go through and get all of the rest of the changes
Okay.
and bring this set of minutes back to you.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll work on rewriting that because I, I did make the change.
All right.
So, I'll talk to you about it.
Good.
Make sure that we have what you wanted.
All right, I'll bring that up.
And we'll, so just don't approve these minutes right now. Just finish the edits, because we have so much to change. Let's just bring them back to you.
And line one twenty-seven, to email a minute taker or himself. You gotta look at it to see.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Yeah. Not sure what that meant. The last one I had was one forty-six. I think it should be "he," or it gives the impression.
Yeah, gives the impression.
Or he got... Because it was referring to Mr. Larson, right, so he got the...
Gives the impression that, that...
Is it?
The fix isn't going to be happening anytime soon. Or he got the impression that isn't going to happen.
Right, and, right, and he got the impression
And, okay, he...
that it isn't going to happen anytime soon. And really wasn't part of the scope of the workshop. That's correct statement.
And we can backtrack to one thirty-two, because I don't think that's what, I know that's not what I was trying to say.
Right.
Um, it was that the engineer is working on creating four possibilities for the gateway um, into the town, so...
Said then the engineer is working on pot, on...
On creating.
On creating.
For cross-sections. For possible cross-sections. For the gateway.
Need more time?
If anyone finds anything else, just email us.
Okay, because there are so many corrections or changes, I think that what we'll do is put off the acceptance of the meeting minutes for another, another draft. Can you have another draft presented to them?
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you another draft.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And we'll move on to, um, new business, and the first item is a twenty-year CIP. Do you have that?
New business?
It's under new business.
I do.
Well, it was new business last month.
Okay.
Oh.
Over, I knew over.
The first over.
I did, well, yeah.
Next over.
I did make the, I was just gonna go over these with you because the, this is the...
The change column.
The changes that I made. I imported that other spreadsheet into the, into the big spreadsheet. Also, the, the department heads met on Friday, and, um, they have added projects in line with your discussion last month, um, and we're, we're expanding it. Uh, the pedestrian town core working group, um, has met, and they prioritize projects, so there's still a lot of stuff going into the, into the CIP, especially in the out-years. Um, so I, I'm waiting for cost estimates back. I, I don't have them updated, um, so it's not complete. It's still a, still a work in progress.
Okay.
So, is that line what you were envisioning, Terry?
Yeah, I'd have to look at it a little, a little bit more completeness to it.
Do you want me to make copies, and I'll give them to everybody?
Sure, yeah.
And just make sure that we're on the right track.
Okay. Okay, while he's getting those copies, why don't we move on to old business and...
I have another item under new business.
Okay.
I'd like to just provide an update. Yesterday, the Mulligans came in with a proposal to add a, what could you call it? I don't know what the name of the, it's a team room or a luncheon room of some type into the hockey arena, in combination with the hockey arena. Now, the reason I raise this is that we own the hockey arena, and they're going to take out the visitors' locker room and replace it with an area where they can seat people, and teams can rent this space for the purpose of having buffets, and they would also be allowed to serve in there wine and beer as well, all right? And, um, essentially, um, the town, the reason I'm raising this is because, one, my understanding basically is, is they're not changing the envelope of the, of the building in any way, that, um, it really doesn't have to go through site plan review, but I wanted to make you aware of it, that the selectmen have relaxed the rules on serving of alcoholic beverages on town property to allow this to occur, and essentially told Mulligans, you know, we've gotta revise the lease and do some other legal things, but, um, you know, from a conceptual standpoint, we're in agreement with this proposal for them to be able to go ahead.
Really? Without talking to the other businesses in Town Square about the effects?
Absolutely.
Wow.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Well, and, and, um, you know, raises the point, but, um, anyway, the, the, the nature of this change, that's what they came in and asked for, and, um...
Didn't you say they're taking out the visitors' locker room?
They are taking out an area that used to be designated as the visitors' locker room. My understanding is it's never used.
That's right.
It's way over in the far corner.
It used to be the maintenance room that was turned into the visiting locker room?
Locker room, and it's not, it's really not a locker room. It's just a place, when we had the PSU women's hockey team here, it was a place for them to change.
That's right.
Uh, is what it was, and it hasn't been used as that since then.
Can you explain again? I, I guess I'm a little confused about what they, Mulligans proposed to do.
Well, it's not, it's Mulligans in combination with the hockey arena. It's a fifty-fifty. They're going to construct a room, uh, essentially where they could, where if teams wanted to rent this room, then Mulligans would provide meal services in that room, as well as being able to serve during those times when they're serving meal, they would also include beer and wine. It is not a right to construct a bar in there, um, you know, so it could only be used when teams chose to rent this space.
So, it's only on a rental basis? In other words, a viewer like myself, if I went to watch, could not go in?
No, an outsider could not come in and, and rent the space and use it. It would only be the hockey teams that had, had been at the tournament. Part of the reason in the proposal is the hockey academy, this is the first time I've had, really heard them officially say it. They're not, they're losing money, and they're getting close to, if they can't raise revenue, of having to just pull the whole business out of here, shut it all down.
Well, yeah, they started talking to all the lodges last year
Right.
and worked out a new lodging agreement that was supposed to help that.
Right, but they're continuing to be under financial pressure, and, um, so it looked like a proposal that I, I, you know, personally, do I think this is gonna raise a lot of revenue? No.
No, it's just gonna have a negative impact on, on Legends and the existing places that the hockey folks go to.
Right.
Exactly.
There definitely is no question that it could, that if teams opt to get this space, there's gonna be declining business at other venues.
For sure.
Yeah, but the feeling was that it really was because it doesn't involve changing the structure in any way. They have to get a building permit, but we're not changing the envelope of the business. All these uses are allowed in that particular zone, which to some extent is irrelevant anyway because the town owns it. So, we're not subject to our own regulations, so we're, you know, but it does meet all of the zoning regulations, um, in terms of what they propose to do.
I know having a grandson that comes up here, I have two grandkids that come up here and play. It's like they some, well, they stay at the Black Bear, and some of the people bring food, but we get pizzas from the pizza place. We get wings from, and we try to make it from shaw and other things downstairs into their room that they allow them to use.
That, that's all gonna continue to happen.
That, that continued, can do that.
This is no more than four or five teams a day, because they rent the space for two hour, or actually, an hour and a half, and then they turn over to another team. So, within the context of the number of hours that they are actually holding the games, they're only gonna be doing this
While they're playing.
while they're playing. There's no additional ti, at least that's what was presented, right, Bill? That was what was presented. It was during the...
And I'm...
No, it's not, I, I think they could do it, they can rent the space after the kids have finished playing as well. But they would, they can rent it in two-hour blocks, so they could go out and play the tournament, and at the end of the tournament, they could decide to hold a, a dinner in there. That would be a buffet-style thing, and they'd be able to serve beer and wine. But my, the only question I have is, do you feel, you know, that this is a planning board issue? I mean, the concept was, it really doesn't deal with the planning board.
I think it does.
I think it has to do with the vendors.
The selectmen, well, I mean, it's the selectmen, because it's a town.
It's the selectmen, right.
And if that's the way they wanna proceed, it's their choice, ultimately.
Wow.
Yeah, I think you kind of...
Well, of course, if you look at it the other ways, if the hockey, uh, hockey academy, uh, hockey folks pull out, then nobody's gonna have any business nowhere.
Exactly.
It's, uh...
That's true, too.
So...
We've got a broader, wide problem, which is that there is not enough volume for the level of infrastructure, and I, we talked about this last time, that we're seeing declining volumes of everything in this valley, and, and, and we were, we've been at the point for a long time where businesses are gonna fail. I mean, there's no, no question about that. I mean, I wish, I wish it weren't true, but it is true. And, and I accept what you said. It's true. I mean, what, what, one person's gain is another person's loss.
If it's zero sum. I mean, if it doesn't increase the number of people, then the price expands, but I don't know if we really know how this is gonna play out.
Right, I mean, they, they're hoping that with this, they'd be able to attract more tournaments.
Right, so maybe you get some spillover to the other, you probably would get spillover to the other businesses.
Well, I think that just the fact that you said, and you pointed out that the town, it doesn't have to violate its own rules, you know, whether the planning board thinks it should come before the Monarch is kind of moot.
Well, I, I, it, it, that's from the standpoint of, yes, I mean, we can violate, you know, the town in theory can violate setbacks and everything else, but I did it on, you know, when the issue came up, and we talked about, does the planning board have to be involved? We're not changing the exterior of the building dimensions in any way. We're not allowing use that isn't already allowed on all of these properties that are in there. I mean, you know, serving food in restaurant, you know, in bars is, uh, is, is in common to Town Square.
I think it falls within that category that is a little foggy with regard to the climate of getting a site plan review in our regulations anyway, and, uh...
Yeah.
I think that's what we're hoping to get some clarification on through this process of changing.
Right.
Um, I, I see it as a little bit of a change of use for that particular building.
Although the golf club...
But it's not, but again, you know, it's an allowed use.
It is an allowed use, but I think it's a change of use.
Oh, yeah, there's no question. It's a change of use, but it's allowed.
You could interpret the regulations as saying a change of use requires a, a site plan review.
Isn't it similar to what the golf clubhouse did over the past couple of years in broadening their scope with more of a bar and more food service than what it had been previously?
But Mulligans already has cameras into the, the hockey arenas, and people sit where it's warmer and eat and drink in their restaurant.
But they still would. I mean, this is Mulligan's really trying to expand. I mean, that's how I understood it yesterday, but...
Well, are you looking for a general consensus, Bill, or are you looking to see, to see if the, you wanna vote from the board, or...
Um... I, I, I was just sharing it as information, but, um, if the consensus of the board is that you believe it is subject to site plan review, then I think you, you know, then the board has a right to say, you know, we don't think you should be doing this without site plan review, and then we'll have to go back to them, and I, I don't know what the Board of Select would do.
Um, Wes, before we, let's have a follow-up on something that Wendy, um, said, um, golf course. Was that a, was that a similar process? I don't recall, or I just simply didn't know what was in that building ahead of time.
They just, they just did what they did, because it was...
It is a building permit, we...
Right, so the reason I bring that up is that there is, uh, an earlier case of something like this, where the board did not feel that it was in their remit to, to comment.
Well, the original building was subject to site plan review.
Right.
So, the building was put up. I, I think at the time, they had a liquor license, and there were all these other things. They had a liquor, they had a liquor license when that building was built. Um, so I don't know what the change of, you know, I, I think all of that was approved. Now, what they did was remodel the interior, you know, but I don't think...
It was a change of use.
Well, the kitchen was added out. I don't think that, was the kitchen original to the building?
I don't think so.
I don't.
I don't think it was.
I'm sure it was at least remodeled.
I thought Legends was originally the golf course bar.
No. Legends? No.
Yeah.
Originally the golf course bar. They've, as far as I, the, the golf course has had a liquor license for the last thirty years.
When it was up on the hill there, the old...
Yeah, they had a liquor license up on the hill. They served, now, it was limited, but they had a license. Now, they've never served food other than at, you know, they, they would do like, um, buffets and things, but that, I don't know. But it's, it's a prob, because I did notice, like, you walk over there, and they built a warming hut. And he has a tendency to, you know, on the, on the tubing hill.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, it just puts things up.
Was it a warming hut or a storage? I noticed that...
I have no idea what that is.
I wouldn't know.
I don't even know what it is.
He had a storage complex of metal container that was approved as part of his tubing hill process. He's taken that down and replaced it with the wooden building, which will be for the staff, um, to stay warm while they're out there working, and then it will store all of the equipment. Um, and he told Chris, I don't know if he's done it yet, that he was taking the metal storage unit out and replacing it with that wooden building, so...
Okay, um...
Well, anyway, just might be the bearer of information.
Okay, the selectmen are asking if the planning board feels that this, um, change in the hockey arena should be, uh, should require a presentation to the planning board. And I guess we'll take a vote to see how many, are all those in favor of, uh...
I don't know if I'm clear enough to vote.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Would you like some more discussion?
What is the actual?
Why do we think we need a site plan?
Yeah, what's the actual...
We don't necessarily think we do it. This is what the votes are. I, I think it's a little ambiguous with regard to what requires a site plan and what doesn't require a site plan. We, we've been through this on other, um, projects, so at this particular point, um, if it's a change in use, even though it's an allowed use, the regulations, in my interpretation, could be interpreted to say that that would require a, um, site plan review. But if you, if you really go through the regulations, it, it's conflicting, and it, and you could read it such... But if you, if you really go through the regulations, it, it's conflicting and it, and you could read it such that it doesn't require it as well for the same thing. So I guess it's up to the board to just determine whether or not they think it should come before the board.
Is it a change of use is the question that I'm wrestling with in my mind.
Well, um. I, I would contend that this is, but that building is in fact a change in use. But I'm not sure that it, but I'm not sure I agree that a change in use is, is, it needs to be more than a change in use. I continue, the regulations are very ambiguous as to who, whether it's the board of selectmen or the planning board. Has the authority to determine whether something is a conforming use or a non-conforming use. My understanding is ultimately it's the board of selectmen that determine whether something is in, in fact in conformance with the zoning. Cause it's their responsibility to enforce the zoning.
And in this case, though.
So, but I, you know, but I, I, it's ambiguous, as Terry says, it is very ambiguous in some of these, who has the authority, you know, and who do you go to? It's not clear to me.
And this is town property and therefore not.
This is, the fact that it's town property, I, I don't place any weight on this at all. Other than, we're exempted, in theory, anything is allowed on town property if the town allows it, you know, if the board of selectmen vote to do it, but.
And didn't the board of selectmen?
But I don't think the board of selectmen would have approved it if they, if this wasn't allowed on village, on commercial one property.
Right.
Which is what that hockey academy sits on. Well, with the hockey rink.
Sits on.
Right, sits on.
So the selectmen did approve it though, correct?
Yeah, right, but I mean, but if we made a mistake, we made a mistake, we'll go back and correct the mistake.
Every, every decision, land use decision or anything like this can be appealed. That was an administrative decision by the board of selectmen. A planning board has the right to appeal that, you just, you tell the, the selectmen that you feel they made a mistake. I mean, that's how the process, just like every time you approve a subdivision or a site plan review or whatever. The board of selectmen have the right to challenge that decision, that's part of the process, so this is.
So in the end, though, won't we wind up approving this anyways? Do we really want to go through all this?
Well, I guess that's what the board is putting a vote on.
Oh, but isn't the fundamental question, like, the building itself, it's a hockey rink or ice rink? And it's still in use as an ice rink, it's just an ancillary function of this room that sometimes it's gonna be used for serving food and beverages.
Functions.
It's an ancillary, it's like someone who has a house, a single family home, still has a single family home, but they build a shed. It's an ancillary thing on their property, but they're not changing the fundamental, single family homelessness of their property. So I don't really see this as.
Serving food and beverages in allowed use in commercial one property.
Right, the authority of the planning board with regard to site plans is site plans for the development of tracks or non-residential uses. So the key word here is development, and development is defined in the same regulations as the construction or improvements on a track. Now, the question is, is that considered an improvement, then you can go into the illegal definition and all that sort of. That's why I say it is a little bit ambiguous and, um, depends on how you interpret it. And this is what we're hoping to clarify, but that basically would be the authority under which the selectmen are asking if the planning board should review it. Any other discussion? Then, um, let's see. I will move that the planning board consider the, um, improvements suggested by the selectmen with regard to the hockey arena. Before mentioned, not be, not be required to come before the, um, planning board for site plan approval.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Okay, then the selectmen have their answer. Thank you, Bill.
Nothing else, that, no, no hidden business.
Mark, did you wanna connect to this?
So I'm sorry that we will find a way to make this more reasonable, but, you know, we're starting to, um, have a conflict between the amount of information we want on the plan. And keeping it, you know, so you're not carrying around poster size, um, pieces of paper. On the bottom lines seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine are what Terry was asking for. In that, those are the total amounts that will be spent in each year out of the budget. Those are the actual annual amounts, okay? The, I took the totaling in lines fifty-eight through sixty-two, I took that total off because it's really irrelevant. It's just a, an informational set of numbers for how much is actually being bonded that year or being spent with cash. The, the critical lines are seventy, seventy, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine. And then below that, eighty-one to eighty-three is just an informational, uh, set of numbers also. Of what the two dollars and fifty cents per thousand would raise in total, okay? And, and what balance we have between the total debt service in the budget and the total available at two dollars and fifty cents a thousand.
Just looking at the minutes in the last meeting, um, in the minutes, we had agreed on line eighty-six to two seventy-five.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, I, I can change that to two seventy-five, that's easy to do. I, it, we did go back and forth between two fifty and two seventy-five, so.
So seven, line seventy-nine is, is the dollar amount on which the taxes are based.
It is the portion of the total appropriation that will be spent on debt service and cash capital items. That's principal and interest payments and cash capital items.
If you gathered enough taxes to pay for line number seventy-nine.
Yes.
Does that cover the expenses for the town's portion of the expenses that year?
Yes, that is the town's portion of debt service and cash capital for that year.
And, okay, debt service and?
Principal interest and cash capital. It's everything that we're gonna pay for infrastructure for capital items in that year.
And. It does not show anywhere in here what the total debt is in any particular year, that's shown on your other charts, right?
I've, I've got one other chart that shows you the, the existing debt on twelve thirty-one of each year.
So someone that was concerned about the amount of debt that we were accumulating as you go on, couldn't be shown here though.
It can't be shown here, it's too, it, it will be too confusing.
Okay.
I gotta, we gotta have some other.
Chart.
Okay.
Or some other spreadsheet that totals that, I.
You've done a fine job.
Well, no, and, and quite frankly, we, because it changes each year, right? We use that other twelve thirty-one, uh, spreadsheet to just show what debt exists on that date.
I don't think, I, I think that's an important.
Oh, yeah, no, and that goes in the town, I mean, that can go in the town report and everything, in fact, we do have, we do total it up, and that's that one right there. We do total it up in the town report and we can point to that when we're talking to folks about it.
Though, this is very informative, though, these last lines are good, for me anyway.
Now, I do not go beyond twenty twenty-eight, um, with the debt principal and interest payments. Because interest rates and everything else, you know, after a ten-year period, who knows what they're gonna be? I can make whatever assumptions you want me to make for planning purposes, and I can fill in those zeros. But I did not carry the calculations out beyond twenty twenty-eight. So if you, if you want me to make it six percent or whatever, up until twenty twenty-eight, I just did a simple interest calculation of four percent. All the way through the, the New Hampshire Municipal Pond Bank right now is, their last, um, issuance was two point nine percent on a twenty-year note. So, you know, our interest rate's gonna raise, uh, go up that quickly, I don't know. If you guys know, please tell me, my investment portfolio needs your assistance. So, um, I'll make whatever, whatever, uh, calculations you want me to do, if you wanna see numbers in there.
Could you explain to me, I know everybody else gets, but I don't know.
No.
Line eighty-three, balance remaining to two fifty, what is that? That's the balance on the debt?
If you took our total assessed valuation and multiply by two point five per thousand, it gives you a dollar amount, right? And so the eight hundred, let's just look at FY eighteen, the eight hundred and thirty-three thousand seventy-one dollars is the total debt service that we're gonna have in the budget next year. Right, if you do all these projects. The total available at two fifty is eight hundred and fifty-two thousand seven fifty-eight. So all I did was subtract thirty-three from that.
Oh, it's just eighty-one minus seventy-nine, okay.
So, so making it two seventy-five is gonna add some money to it and to, uh, line eighty-one, and the balance will go up.
And how did you figure out the total available, other than the?
The total available, I, I took the current three hundred and thirty million dollar valuation, and then I increased it by a half a percent per year. Because we have, you know, changing values all the time.
So even though.
Bill knows it goes up and down.
In the case of a bond, what you've done, uh, yeah, what you've done then is that, as I asked, you spread it out.
Spread it out over twenty years.
But still, the debt would show up as, the line is not here, but the, the debt on your other chart would show that debt all that one time.
It will show, it will, the total debt line will still go up on whatever the bonded amount is on that, on the graph, so.
But this, but this reflects the interest that would be paid on that debt.
That's correct, principal and interest payments that year.
Very good.
In each case, um, we don't start the payments until the year after the project. So anything in eighteen, there's no debt service payments until nineteen.
Okay, any discussion on the CIP as we see it now? Other than the fact that, as Bill pointed out at our last meeting, that, uh, we should be thinking about. A little further into the future, what big expenses we're gonna be looking at.
And that's what we're.
And the priorities.
Well, eventually we're gonna have to prioritize it, yes.
Yeah, I'm not, uh, I kind of took all the reins off the department heads and said, let's, let's put everything on here. And then we'll get to the prioritization and start moving stuff around. If there are any negatives on the balance remaining, that's part of the discussion for next month, right?
Now, they're still looking at, you're seeing the department heads are still looking at.
Well, we're, we're, we have looked at, we have come up with what needs to be put in, we just needed the numbers, we haven't gotten all of those estimates yet.
Okay.
And as Bill, as we told the selectmen yesterday, um, like well two and three, you know, we're still continuing the evaluation of well three and stuff like that. So that will impact the, where the projects fall in the budget, in the overall plan.
I'll, I'll, again, just make an observation of, of, of these kinds of exercises, and it's difficult to correct. But you'll notice that in the first three or four years, there's fairly heavy expenditures, and then they tend to fall off. My contention is they never fall off. You, you'd be better off taking the first four years and then just straight lining that out, all right? Because they will not happen that we're not gonna be spending money out in these future years, something is, and part of it is the problem of something will come up, you know? So, you know, I just point out again, that picture that it shows is that, well, we have to spend a lot of money for the first couple of years, but then after that, we're not gonna spend any money. I, I for one do not accept that, I don't buy that at all. If anything, the expenditures in future years are gonna head up in this town, they're not heading down. But I can't prove that.
Well, common sense would kinda tell you, we're in tear and age.
Well, we're, we're a declining village.
Falling apart, I think, was the.
Well, I backed off on that, aging infrastructure.
But some of that, I think, is, some of what you're talking about is accounted for in here.
Some of it is, yeah.
Police crews are X amount of years.
Oh, I, the, the.
But you're talking about.
I don't worry about the vehicle line, I think that vehicle line is always estimated correctly. It's always the other things that, you know, you're looking and saying, well, I don't need anything right now. Yeah, but as we talked about yesterday with well number three, as the investigation goes on with well number three, there could be a half million dollars to fix well, now, could be. And nobody knows yet to fix well number three.
So, um, I guess the situation is that the department heads will be coming up with more numbers to be added to this. It'll still be considered incomplete based on what the board's discussion was. How does the board want to proceed with, um, filling in the blanks?
Well, we're, we're not filling in the blanks, he is there.
We're doing what Bill is asking, that's part of the exercise that this, that the department heads are going through right now.
That's right.
We're adding in the out-years maintenance, we're gonna put those projects in. I understand what Bill is saying, you know, but remember, this is made up stuff.
Sure.
We are estimating what it's gonna cost.
But if I remember correctly, when I suggested that the department heads do this, I was trampled by the rest of the board, saying that. Oh, no, you know, we've got to have sidewalks, and we've got to do this, all this, we've got to implement all the stuff in the pedestrian village.
We're putting that in too, we're doing, we're doing everything, Terry, we're putting everything in here. To Bill's point of putting down everything that we need, whether it's town core working group numbers, sidewalks. Infra, uh, the, uh, area around the pond improvements with trails, all of that stuff.
Signage.
Signage, everything will be in there.
The, the problem, I.
But you gotta understand that ten or fifteen years for it, they're, they're pure pipe dreams.
And the numbers.
The numbers.
Oh, of course they are, right. But they're projections, right.
But it's on the list, and to Bill's point, we're showing the town that in those out-years, there's gonna be costs for it. We're trying to get, we're trying to capture everything.
Yeah, we're gonna tramp on you again.
I know. I was hurt.
No, we understand that we're gonna, we gotta put in both, we gotta put in all the wants, right? That's what we talked about doing, and put in a maintenance that.
It becomes an explanation to whoever is interested in an explanation, uh, say, the people in, in assembled in town meeting. That the number, this is, the projects are, are knowable to a large extent. But the costs in the out-years are not so much knowable, because we can only project so much in terms of what things will cost.
Well, I, I think.
That far downstream.
I think the issue that we're gonna run into, when we put everything on here, is going to be the discussion of the prioritization.
But that's the critical.
Is going to become.
That's the critical discussion.
Well, but I also think it gets colored by the fact that, you know, like Bill just said, it could be a half a million dollars for well three, or it.
Could be nothing.
Might be a lot less, it might be more, I mean, we don't know at this point in time, but. But, does that mean that we don't do something else because we're afraid that it's going to be a half a million dollars or more? I think that's what we have to, what we have to discussion. I don't know what the ground rule is for those out-years when we're looking at it.
You don't know what you don't know, I mean, this.
And that's why I'm a little hesitant to say, the water and sewer lines in town. Are forty years old, some of them. That's, you know, they, they're getting along in years, but. They're young compared to a lot of other towns' water and sewer lines. So do we go and put replacement costs in here? Or do we say, that's something that we're just gonna reserve a certain amount of money for? And we're gonna take on something if it breaks? You know, do you go back and dig up all the water and sewer lines because they're fifty or sixty years old? And replace them, or do you wait until they break and then go and replace them? You know, that's where I'm having the, the issue of, and. Accounting for the maintenance or replacement of some of this infrastructure, just like this building. You know, we've talked about it being forty years old.
Isn't there a, there are two things going on here, one is the difficulty in, in, in calculating, uh, costs and out-years. But just take your example for, um, with regard to the water sewer lines. Is there not an industry standard or some kind of professional senses that act that these type of water lines in, in, in this environment? Uh, with this type of usage, after X amount of years, they're going to have to be replaced. I think that's kind of what we're trying to get at.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
But you, yeah, and it, it, yes, it probably is, and we'll try to, we'll try to find out what that is. The. If we put a camera down the distribution line out of well three, a couple of weeks ago. Absolutely no tuberculation at all in the pipe, it's still clean inside, right? There's no buildup of any gunk or anything. Up in Bethlehem, they have a, a water line that's exactly the same age. And a, a six-inch pipe has this much area in it where the water's going through because of tuberculation. I mean, and I don't know if, if that's what some of our pipe looks like in town, you don't, you don't know. What, you don't know. So it's just hard to.
Right.
For such a long period of time, to, and that's why we do end up with, like Bill points out, these six to eight years of big numbers and then nothing after that. But we'll, we'll make our best stab at it and we can talk about it in November.
Okay. Fine job, thank you, Bill. And we know it's difficult, but just like the longest day in John Wayne, that's where we get the job.
No, no, I, we're, we're, we're. Yeah, no, the, the department, you know, the department heads are doing good work and they have some big ideas too. About how to improve their operations, going back to, you know, does the town take the first steps to make improvements? And then hopefully the businesses will come along with us, or do we wait for the businesses to do that?
Well, that's, that's basically why we hired the SE group and why they came back with recommendations. At some point, we need to wrestle with, are we going to go ahead and do that? You know, and, and it's probably gonna take money, it's not gonna happen for nothing.
Okay, I have one other item under new business, I guess I'm gonna consider it. And that is that, uh, we had. We have a, an agreement, actually, with the North Country Council. With regard to review of the, uh, regulations or zoning ordinance, I can't remember which is, zoning ordinance?
Zoning ordinance.
And, um, we had been informed by North Country Council that Tara Bamford is, has left. And it was originally with Tara that we had, uh, considered doing this. Well Tara has, uh, the North Country Council has not yet replaced Tara. And Tara has contacted the town and offered her services as a private consultant for, uh, similar type work. So, the board now has the situation where we have a signed agreement with North Country Council. Which doesn't particularly specify Tara Bamford as the representative. And so I don't know what ramifications it would be if we did break our contract with North Country Council, have you had any discussions with them?
Well, not, not with, I haven't had any discussions with the executive director. The contract goes through town meeting of eighteen.
Okay.
So I don't, after that, I don't think we are locked in to doing anything in particular with them. The executive director of the North Country Council has said that. They will provide a staff member, whether it's the executive director or the new planner, whenever they bring that person on. To continue to work with you like Tara, Tara did.
Were there any, were there any deliverable dates on that? Cause we have a deadline here, right?
Yeah, we're running out, we've run out of time.
They're running out of time.
We have no time. Tara's work, the original work would have to have been done virtually by this meeting or the next meeting. To have any impact in terms of trying to get it to a town meeting. So as far as I'm concerned, to proceed with either one of them at this point is a waste of time. In terms of this year's meeting, now, we can say we're gonna do it for next year's meeting. But, you know, not, not, well, next year, two thousand nineteen. But I don't think there's anything either one of them could do that would help us prepare for two thousand eighteen.
Well, isn't there a clause in the contract for canceling it?
Yes, I mean, I don't know the exact wording, but yes.
I would think they breathe a sigh of relief.
That's what I was getting at, if the timelines aren't being met, it's not, I'll break the contract, just cancel.
You have the sign, you have the sign issues that you've continued to deal with. Those are being reviewed by town council right now. When Bill forwarded them yesterday to town council. And we will continue to work on those, so there'll be some zoning ordinance changes. That will be part of the two thousand eighteen town meeting if you want.
And so when Tara contacted the town, was she offering her services for the same amount?
She's open, yes, she's opening her own.
She implied that it might be for a better deal.
It might be for a better, lesser.
She's really the only reason why we agreed to it, really.
Because things went so well working with her in the first place, yeah.
Can we encumber the funds in some way, Mark?
It was a separate warrant article.
It was a separate warrant article, so the time, we're not restricted to spending the money this year?
I, I believe you can encumber it to next year, I would check.
So next year, okay.
If you wanna encumber it to eighteen, because it was a separate warrant article, I believe the selectmen can pull it out of the budget and.
Well, because it seems to me to even hire Tara at this point.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to rush.
Well, we're, we're, you know, we're not gonna get it done.
Right, right.
For, for twenty.
For twenty nine, for twenty eighteen.
But if she's available, assuming we set the contract aside, she's available now and can do it, it could be done, just not in time for twenty eighteen, but it is done for twenty nineteen. Rather than waiting to do it.
Negotiate the cost.
But the money would get, tend to get spent next year, so we, we need to make sure that we could have the authority to encumber the funds.
And I think we've seen that we need the time, a lot of time, I mean, we're supposed to start this in July and it just kept falling.
Right, so I was saying, okay, so twenty nineteen.
Right, maybe we could have one meeting by then.
One extra meeting.
Yeah.
But the issue in front of us is still the contract with the council.
Well, I, I think there's a couple of things that have to be checked out. Number one, you know, what are our, what are our possibilities if, can we cancel the contract with the North Country Council if we so choose? The second thing is, do we so choose? And if, if we do, do we want to hire Tara or someone else to continue with this, um, process?
Yeah, I, as far as the contract with North Country Council, I, I think inaction on your part is fine. You don't have to continue to do the work. And then once you get to the two thousand eighteen town meeting, you're, you're done with North Country Council.
I think, I think I would be actually more assertive, I would go to them and say, we're not doing this.
Right, we're not doing it.
We're out, right, and so, so that they know. You know, what I hate to see is they hire some junior staff member and then they decide to send him down here. I mean, you know.
Yeah, certainly, you know, we had a certain person in mind when we signed the contract, so I think it's a reasonable, okay, so you're saying that's not an issue?
The, yeah, we don't do anything.
Is it an issue with regard to pushing the funding forward for?
Yeah, I do have to check with council to make sure that we can encumber the funds, but I believe because it was a separate warrant article that was voted on, yeah.
Okay, then, um.
We did need that warrant out.
Yes, it was.
Yes, I believe we did.
Then that being the case, then I see no reason to. Uh, push back the review of the zoning ordinance, and still, we would still like to have it done. Nothing's changed other than the fact that it's not gonna happen in this next meeting, but that to me doesn't make that much difference at all, I think still. It's a, we should, should have things reviewed, I think it requires it. So, um, I don't think it's as, it's not as pressing now. But I don't think we should put it off and say, let's, let's put it off until next year, I think we should just continue the process.
But do we need to get, for a proposal from, from Tara?
Well, I guess that's the next thing is.
So we need a proposal from Tara for a two thousand nineteen town meeting.
If that's the decision.
If that's the decision, and then we would need to make sure we can encumber the funds. If the answer to those two things are positive, then. When Tara's putting together the proposal, it would be to start work in December or January on the two thousand nineteen changes.
Sure, I see why, I don't see why not.
I'd just recommend January, get the signed stuff out of the way. And then you can start working on the other stuff.
Well, um.
No, just, just a question, I think this has been asked and answered before, but, um. Can any of these changes that are proposed be enacted administratively until town meeting, uh, approves them?
You can, you vote to move them forward to town meeting in November.
Right.
November or December meeting, and they have the, the effect of the regulation, so they're in effect from that point.
From the vote, right.
Depending on the vote in March. But there is a window that when you have decided that these are the changes that are gonna be made, they do go into a film. So no one can come in and do a project in contradiction to them before town gives an entry.
In, 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 in the interim.
All right, is it, is it generally agreed that we would prefer to work with Tara than another agent from the North Country Council? Tara's our girl.
I'm surprised she wants to work with us.
You know.
Given the, uh.
When you're starting a business, you'll work with anybody.
Yeah, well, good, we are anybody.
Uh, okay, Mark, do you need anything from us in order to get that information then? Uh, whether, you know, if she does continue to have an interest when she could start and how much it would be?
No.
Okay. Would you do that then and, and report for the next meeting?
Okay, thank you. All right.
I have, I have two questions.
Yes.
Two, two questions, one for you, Mark, and I'll come back. Well, are you, one question left? Can you elaborate a little more on well three, what's the next step? The camera showed the pipe's fine, and are you gonna go into?
So, we, you know, replaced a, a valve that was leaking.
Yeah.
Has been replaced, the well's been put back together. We need to, we have confirmed that there, the line that was losing pressure is now maintaining pressure. So, we're going to take bacteria samples over the next week, week and a half. And we're gonna bring Emory and Garrett, our groundwater specialist, the well people.
Yep.
And the town engineer into the selectmen's meeting on the twenty-fifth and discuss what the options are.
Okay. Refresh my memory, is well number three the only that was contaminated?
That's correct.
And that gets to that long-term issue here, is whether we, you know, it's just a simple fix and you continue to run the line through.
We don't, we really don't know, I mean, the disturbing news on well three, it's over a ten-year period, it's failed twice.
Right.
If it had only failed once, you have a tendency to say, hey, let it go, you know, if it tests clean, throw it in, you know, and use the water. But that it's failed twice leads you to believe maybe there's something, so we need the water experts back in again. And say, no, look, if, if their recommendation is just, just go ahead and test it if it's clean, use it. I don't know what.
I was getting, I was getting to it.
You know, maybe we'll do that, I don't like that answer, but, you know, I'll.
Well, I was getting to a different point as I relate to the CIP and that.
Yeah.
Is a long-term plan, for example, rerouting that line to the new.
Either rerouting the line, well, we're not even sure, what, nobody knows whether rerouting the line to the new treatment plant is, is, would fix.
I hear what you're saying, what I was hearing yesterday was the, the.
Yeah, but don't know. No one knows.
Well, there were people saying they did know, but I hear what you're saying.
Well, yeah, well.
It needs, you're, you're one.
They said something different three months ago.
But that should be reflected, I mean, if, that could be something here, rerouting line to.
That's what the well two, well three project is.
Moving everything through that building.
Well, no, there's a placeholder basically to. Fix is the wrong word, to address the treatment issues for well three and well two.
Right.
That's what the four hundred thousand dollars is in there. That's not for any particular rerouting it to the new building or fixing the line or whatever, it's not a, you have, there's no chosen course of action here.
Right.
But there's a placeholder there.
An es, an escrow. Thank you.
And then I have one more question in regards to site plan. I noticed that there's a building being put up on, um. The name of the road is up by Dorothy and Mark's.
Yeah.
It's a garage, I mean, River Road is a garage.
Across from River Road.
Yes, that's on Peckham's property.
Is that, does that need site plan approval, did I miss?
No, it does not, it's a single-family home, he has a building permit. And, uh, there was some question that was raised as to whether he was too close to the road, he's not. He's, he's the required distance off the edge of the road, so it, you know, he has a building permit. But single-family homes are exempted from site plan review.
Okay, is it off the edge of the road or off the right of way?
It, it's off the right of way, and he is thirty-five feet back from the right of way. That's what, it sure doesn't look it, but that's, they said they went out and measured it and it's thirty-five feet from the right of way.
Wow, what is it, the building?
Just a garage.
Just a garage?
Yeah, it's a storage shed.
Storage shed.
Well, it has a nice foundation.
He does, well, now he got a frame up too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of Willie's projects, he has nothing else to do.
Put it way out there, man.
Okay, um, and if there's no, is there any other new business?
Um, again, just a point of view, just some information for the selectmen's meeting. Yesterday at the selectmen's meeting, we, um, discussed what, what is called the MS one. Which is the results of the town-wide reevaluation and setting, and therefore setting what the total town evaluation is. Now, the net, the net result is the total valuation of all the properties in the town is declining anywhere from three to five percent. Depending on what happens with the, with the, you know, so in some ways, it's declining about three to five percent. So I just want you to know that number, there, individual properties are all over the place. And up, some up, some down, generally, single-family homes went down. Little tiny condos went down a little bit, more expensive condos tended to go up. Land kinda stayed the same. Uh, and there's a big state fight going on over, over how, how, how much you can tax utilities. Such as the telephone, the electric and the, uh, and, and the cable company.
Are we one of the bad towns?
Yes, we are.
We are, well, it's, I, I don't know, we'll see how this. We'll see how this, we, we, we submitted it on the basis of we're not changing the number and the state says, you're changing the number. We'll see how that ends up. But the, that, e- e- regardless of that issue, the, the total valuation of town has actually declined slightly. That is, is the planning board thinks about, you know, where it needs to go in the future, you know, is just relevant information, that's all.
In terms of the tax rate, right?
Biggest problem is, is the single, the single biggest component of the town's valuation is actually single-family homes. Single-family homes are not selling. In the last three years, in the last two years, have been basically three valid sales. And, and that's not enough to do anything with. You can't determine anything from that, and, um.
Would you say valid, what's a valid sale?
There, there are, there are sales that went, that, that did occur, but they have to be taken out because they're distressed sales or something that tends to distort the value.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's, just as we think about long-term planning for the town, you know.
But they have been houses built too.
Yeah, yeah.
But the trend is down.
Trending down. Well, the last couple of years they haven't. They, they've stopped selling.
Well, thank you for your bleak views on everything, Bill.
Be sure you wanna.
It's just a fact. It's not a view.
You don't have to go back to falling apart.
No, it's just a view. It's just a fact.
Okay, then we'll move on to all business and the review of the signs. Bill had issued a package to us earlier and.
Right, and I don't think we, you know, here's the thing, we've sent these out to town council. If as individual planning board members, you get a chance, you would, if you would look at these, we're not going to go through these in detail. If you got any suggested changes, I'm sure there's all kinds of errors or things in here, and please send them to me, and I will incorporate them before, along with what feedback I get from town council. Hopefully, town council doesn't say, you can't do this, but they're liable to.
I just had a couple of thoughts, you know, some, of course, grammatical things, but also, it seems to me that there's, we're talking under section D, um, number, number four, and it also kind of leads into the temporary signs in the chart. But flags, are they home decoration? Are they signs? Because like in number four, it's written, temporary banners, flags, and other outside decorations are considered temporary signs. They may not exceed ten square feet. But then, in the chart, under single-family.
Homes, we say that decorations and, right.
So, we say a lot, temporary signs are not permitted for single-family homes, but flags are temporary signs. And are we really not permitting decorative flags? But then other limitations, home decorations are not considered signs.
What do you, my question becomes, what would the board want to do?
Yeah, what are, how do we consider flags?
Histor, the re, this is a carryover. Historically, in the previous regulations, flags, banners, and other things are considered to be signs. But we can do whatever we want. What do you want to do?
I mean, I personally feel like flags and banners that are decorative, and I know we can't necessarily look at what.
Well, we could take out and other, I could take the decorations out. Flags, we could say that temporary ban, flan, temporary banners and flags are considered to be temporary signs.
Or what if they're just temporary banners and flags were considered outside decorate? I just think of the houses that I passed that had little, you know, flowery flags fluttering in.
Well, right, and the attempt is on a house to say, yeah, you can have that.
Right.
You know.
Except this sort of says you can't, but maybe you can depending on, so, yeah, just to clarify it.
Right, okay, all right, I got it.
Well, they're not really more than ten square feet.
No.
So.
This, a standard size flag is, size flag is not.
And it does, it also say that basically.
Well, a standard house decorative flags that like sold industry-wide is.
Those are fifteen square feet?
Sorry, like national flag?
Those are the big, bigger ones.
Well, I mean, like even, even a welcome sign or a welcome flag or a flower flag.
Those are smaller, because we, we sell them, they're small, they're more like under nine square feet, yeah. But what's standard for that, but there are other standards that, you know, that, you know, like a standard American flag, I'm sure is more like the three by five.
Yeah, but bigger than three by five, the four by six.
Right.
Too big.
Right, but little like decorative.
Yeah, they're violating this statute.
Well, unless they are considered decorations of the home, that's what.
But this says outside decorations like flags that are four by six are temporary si- signage and would fall under the regulations. Isn't that what you're saying you're worried about with it?
Right, or do we reword it in a way so that flags, banners, et cetera, larger than whatever square feet are considered temporary signs? Anything under that sign, that square footage would not be considered. Do we, do we base it on size? Is that?
Well, if you're not basing it on the wording, then town council is going to have a problem.
Exactly, I know.
Right.
Because even if someone's waving a little flag that says, I don't know, something incendiary, but it's, it's small and no one can really read it, whatever. But if it gets to be twenty square feet, then maybe that's where the issue should be. Clarified.
How the rest do you feel about flags and banners? Or do you regulate them or not? You, you see now, this comes like the school banner. You, you know, the one that's over in the Waterville Valley Elementary School, it says the best school, that's a temporary banner. It's been up for four years. Now, they're exempted because they're in governmental property.
Right.
But, but, you know, anybody could hang out, you know, could hang out a banner that says, you know, great beer hall here in town square. I mean, you know, if, if it's a banner, do you want to regulate them or not? That's the question, and if so. I mean, we can exempt, I, I, the intent was that if on a single-family home, we're not interested in regulating, you know, decorations at all. So, regardless of size, we're basically saying, anything you would consider to be a home decoration is, is okay.
Can we define, under the new regulations, can we define a decoration as something without verbiage on it or wording, or no?
I think we're, we're borderline.
I mean, how do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're borderline, you know, that if it's a picture, it's okay.
What if it's a cross or a crescent?
Yeah.
Or a star or a day.
Those are allowed.
That's what I'm saying.
Those, those are exempted, so flags that are like net, you know, in some ways in here that's written that if, you know, like the American flag is not considered, you know, is allowed. Religious things are allowed. You know, you can't regulate those.
I'm just trying to make the point that words aren't the only thing that can express someone's point of view.
Right.
I don't like flaps, so I don't allow them.
You can have bunny rabbits.
So, your suggestion was, uh, is to change that temporary flags, larger, temporary banners and flags larger than ten square feet are considered to be temporary signs. I am fine with that. I think that's better.
And do I hear you say for businesses or for across the board? Private homes?
That, that's a general thing, and then we get into specifics where we exempt on single-family homes. Anything that's a, where the homeowner says, that's just a decoration, there, then it's allowed. It's not subject to regulation. Now, I don't know how anybody determines what's a reg, what's a decoration. I mean, basically, if the, if the resident says, that's a decoration, it's a decoration. That's the way these things go.
I'm fine with that, but do we, do we also call condos, single families?
No.
Then what's the deal on that?
No, condos aren't allowed to have decorations, unless that are visible from a public right of way. You can do all, anything you want inside of condo complexes, as long as you can't see it from a road. Anything goes inside a condo that's not visible from a road.
Because it's controlled by the.
It's the condo association's decision, not the board of selectmen.
Okay, got it.
Right.
Right.
So, could it go in a condo? Yeah, I, you know, if, right, if somebody wants to put out a big banner. What I'm saying right now is that home decorations are subject to regulations in condos, if they're visible from the road.
And the other larger question I had, again, there are other little things, but in the chart, looking at completed commercial properties with multiple businesses.
Right.
It says, for each business in the complex.
Right.
Two signs per business, one of which, one might, must be attached to the building, one may be off the property.
Right, may be located on another piece of private property with the permission of the owner of that property.
This is kind of hard for everyone to see. So, along forty-nine, we could have green and business, but why not?
If you, well, if you went, if you went to, if you went to Windsor Hill and got their permission to put it on their property, yes.
And then the athletic club, and then the golf course.
If they sold you the right to put you, that's the way this is written. Now, if we don't like that.
No.
No, no.
The problem you run into is, the problem we ran into with Roper Realty. Roper Realty has a sign. This, they, they, there was no place to put their sign, they claim, on village condo property.
But I, I feel like that's an exception to the rule, not something that we should create the rule around.
No problem, I'll take it out.
No, I, I don't think that you could do what you're saying could be done.
Okay.
Because the person who owns the property, which is allowing the signs to be put up, can't have that many signs, right?
Why not?
Well.
It doesn't say that.
Well, okay.
It doesn't really say that, you know.
You can't, you wouldn't be able to do it on public property.
You can't do it on public property.
Now, if you're, if you have a piece of private property, there are only certain things that you can do with regard to signs. It doesn't make any difference whose they are. You can't have.
That's right.
Right.
You can only have a certain number of signs on your property.
Right.
The fact that they're not yours doesn't come into being, so I don't think you can do.
Sign card on your property.
I, I think if the feeling would be that we don't want businesses putting their signs all over town in different places, then is to take this offer here and say, look, and she's right. You can always come and ask for an exception. I think it's some escape clause somewheres here that, that you can always go to the board of selectmen and ask for an exception.
Well, I don't think there's a danger in that one, though. I, I don't think it's a danger.
But why, why would we even want it? Why, why would we want to allow it?
Why risk it?
Yeah, I, I, in my view, we, because the whole point was to minimize sign noise.
Right.
And for a complex, we need directions to that complex and descriptions of the amenities within there, but we don't need the individual businesses saying, well, I'm there, I'm there, I'm there.
See, we've got all kinds of non-conforming things right now, like, for instance, the big sign for town square. I don't know whose property that is.
Town's.
That's in the town's property.
It's in the right of way.
It's in the right of way. In the future, we wouldn't allow that. So, if they wanted to fix that, it would have to, you know, they'd have to remove it.
Remember that we're over, on this regulation, we're going to overlay the pedestrianization recommendations of the directional signs, right? So, there's another whole set of signs that are potentially going to go up that aren't even addressed in here. Because they're on public property, and they're not specific to a business. They just say lodging and restaurant and, you know, that sort of thing. They don't say the Snowy Owl Inn, which is what Bill's talking about with that big sign for town square. That's not going to say down the road, it's not going to say, um, town square, it's just going to say lodging and whatever. I, I mean, that's the, the theory.
Right.
So, that's got to be taken into account when you're looking at these regs.
On public property, I mean, essentially, we have a statement that approval is the sole discretion of the board of selectmen. Have a right to accept or reject anything on public property for any reason. But, well, it's board of selectmen right now, I mean, you know. And I, I suspect it would have to stay board of selectmen if you couldn't really make it the planning board. I mean, I don't know whether you'd want it to begin with. So, what's the thought, let's take one at a time. What's the thought about this? You, you know, sign off of your own property? No? That, I, I, I kind of agree, if, if that's, if we don't want them, then why put it in here?
Just, just as a, an addition to that, to be considered in the same breath, is, could both the allowed signs be put on the same building?
Yeah, sure.
No problem with that.
Have, have, right, one of which must be attached to the building. I don't have any problem with putting two in the building.
And one could be free standing.
And if you can't see it from a road, you can put any sign you want up. So, that's the other principle here, you know, is, is essentially, in many, many of the signs in town squares are not readable from a road.
And along that line, two signs per stand alone, business operating within the condominium complex association limited to thirty-six square feet. Is that thirty-six square feet total for both of them, or is that thirty-six square feet per each?
I meant per sign, and we ought to say that.
Yeah, across the board, yeah.
So, you could have two six by six signs on the same building, right?
Sure.
Or on the building and maybe free standing on the property, you know, if you need something else on the property to help indicate. You know, I'm thinking of something we don't have now, but maybe something comes along where you need a directional sign elsewhere on the property. I don't know. So, maybe one free standing as well as one attached on the building, but as long as you're on the same lot.
I think Bill was giving them a little bit of flexibility in that you were allowed two signs and it was your choice whether both were on the building or.
Right, but we just say that one of them has got to be on the building, and we don't care where you put the other sign.
As long as it's on the lot.
As long as it's located on the lot.
Yeah.
But most of that's going to deal with local, you know, the rules of the business complex, right? Nothing to do with us.
So, did you decide that you were not going to have any off-premise signs for businesses?
I think that's what we decided.
I don't think we should.
That should be changed for all the other.
Yeah.
Properties as well.
Just, just remove it.
I have been reluctant to add wording on private property that gives the board of selectmen the right to override these regulations. I don't think we want to go down that road, because the problem is, having been on the board of selectmen, all these people come in and petition one at a time, and you have a tendency to say, ah, yeah, you could do it.
Well, then, I was going to bring this up as well. In your statement of purpose.
Yeah.
And I think it's good. The principle guiding these regulations is that signings should not destroy or attract from scenic vistas or compete unnecessarily with natural environment. So, therefore, I would think that under C.
Under C.
General requirements for permanent signs.
Right.
The first thing you would put would be, signs shall not diminish the overall attractiveness of the town, which would give, it lends itself directly to the purpose and intent. You've got it under maintenance, but it really should, in other words, under maintenance, you say, signs should be in good order and repair at all times so as to constitute no danger or hazard to public safety and to enhance the overall attractiveness of the town. But I think, rather than have it maintenance, that enhance the overall attractiveness of the town should be the first requirement for the signs.
That is so, the problem is, it's so subjective. You know, and we got into this with the, with the lawyers before. They said, you've got to start to spell out, what do you mean by that? And so, we said, well, you know, you can't have lighting of this type. We, construction, we say it's got to be, you know, it's got to be out of these materials, it's got to be professionally done. I don't know how, otherwise you put the selectmen in, like, I like that sign or I don't like that sign, you know? And, and we had at one time. And, and we had, at one time, I'd say, for instance, I, I said, no bright colors. And then somebody said, well, you know, in, in some cases, bright colors are okay. So we said, no fluorescent color. But I don't know what I'd do with it. But I'm open to any other, you, you, you know, I think we should look at, we say, it could be wood, masonry metals, or substitute materials which simulate them. Some, you can have plastic that looks like wood, you know? And lettering should either be engraved, carved, or painted, and it's gotta be professionally done. You can't, you know, scribble something, you know, 'cause I struggle with, you know, you get into, somebody puts a chalkboard out that says, you know, we're having open bar, you know, they do this on the golf course, open bar on Friday, you know, well, I. In theory, that's a temporary sign. He's supposed to get a permit to do that. I mean, I think we just ignore them. I mean, you can find lots of exceptions. So I would say, Terry, no. I don't think, I, I, now, my understanding of regulations is you can use the guiding principle for the purpose of, we do it in, 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 like, site plan review. We can use the guiding principle to say, we think what you're doing here is violating the guiding principle, and for that reason, we're turning it down. I think we could do that. But subject to probably, if somebody wanted to make an issue out of it, they'd sue us, but I don't, aside, come on. You know, and what can we do? See, that's the other thing, is, is, what's the, what's it, can we have the right to remove a sign? If somebody builds a permanent sign and doesn't apply, can we go cut it down to town?
Not without getting the, not without.
Not without getting a court order, right?
But yes, we can go to court and get an order to remove the sign at the owner's expense.
Do we wanna make a statement in here that, that non-conforming, you know, that non-conforming sign, you know, signs that, installation of signs on private property that violate these, that are not approved, that do not have approval, are subject to?
Well, the zoning ordinance has an enforcement paragraph that says you have the right to enforce the ordinance.
And does that include the right to find?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, then we don't need anything.
You can find them and you can remove.
Okay.
And you can make people tear a building down. They just did it in oldenness. So a guy built a two-story house on the lake, and the zoning board of adjustment refused his appeal and told him to take it down.
Wow.
Yeah, so it happens every now and then. But we're the. But you gotta have lawyers involved in.
Well, yeah, you see those, you don't win those.
You don't win those very often.
Because he's gonna get a court order putting it on hold.
Actually, he started taking the roof.
Oh, he did? Oh, okay.
They did, huh?
Well, they knew what they were doing was wrong to begin with. Yeah, so just went ahead and built it.
Without a permit?
Uh, in, in contravention to the permit, yeah. Just said, we disagree with you and, yeah, it's pretty dumb.
But just as the planning board, as a board, now, the individuals may have preferences and likes and dislikes and so forth with regard to a site plan review, say, for landscaping, like you mentioned. The board as a whole makes a decision whether or not, in the end, that.
Right.
Landscaping is attractive or not attractive enough to be allowed as the way they're going to do it. Why doesn't the same apply to the selectmen, which is a board of three? Individuals may have different likes and dislikes, but the board at the end makes a decision that either this proposed sign is detrimental to the attractiveness of the town or is not.
I, 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 I think you could, but if, if someone sued you, you'd be on very weak ground.
Over a sign, as you said.
Yeah, no one's gonna sue you. I mean, but, yeah, but I think you could. I think you could point out to them, look, what you're, what you've proposed here in our, in our, in our wisdom is detracting from the scenic values of the town. And I think we, I think you could turn it down for that reason.
Bill, it's a little more problematic because of the Supreme Court decision on.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do it with content.
Right.
I can't do it because somebody makes a sign that says, this town sucks on it or something. I, I, I don't know what we can do with that, you know? We're saying that's gotta be allowed, but we could reject it on the basis, you used, you know, it looks ugly.
They got an engraved sign.
But if they. Well, somebody is, those kinds of emotional actors, I don't think somebody's gonna pay.
No.
Three, four hundred bucks to construct a sign, a quality sign.
Somebody might.
But they might. Because even temporary signs, we say that it can't be, you're just a piece of paper with hand lettering on it. It's gotta be more than that. And that's tough on a lot of people. I, you know, because what do you do with open houses? I mean, that's what they wanna do. They wanna write on their open house in the address. And we're saying, well, you're gonna have to do a little better than that.
Right.
And that's, that's another thing, under, see, on the second page, it's under B. I guess it's five B. This is the exemptions, and, you know, I read down through the exemptions, and I can't help but see three of them that are based on the purpose of the sign. In other words, D, says signs needed for public safety, that's a purpose. And sign, political signs, that's a purpose.
Right.
And also the signs on private property indicating private property and, you know, no trespassing and so forth. That's a purpose.
Right.
So, it, I'm wondering how we can define these by purpose, and yet, when it comes to.
Let, I'd let the lawyer wrestle with that one a little bit.
Because you.
Political signs are easy. We could take political signs off the list because we're not allowed to ban political signs, period. But you're right, to, when is, if you can't read the content, how do you determine, how do you declare something a political sign versus non-political? I don't know.
Because you could, you could, if you're gonna allow them by purpose, you could deny them by purpose. Which, which you, you could say, for instance, you can't be signs for a commercial or industrial intent. In other words, you don't want for sale sign, or you don't want.
I, I would interpret this to mean that if you had an E nine eleven sign out front, you know, like, you know, for whatever reason, you had, you know, because you get into house numbers, become a sign, right? That doesn't count as one of your signs, you know, because it, that's all the intent where would be is you can have those and it doesn't count as your sign.
I see what you mean, and I have no problem with it.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think you're trying to allow those signs, and that's fine.
I, I don't know.
That's exactly the point, though, is that we have limited it to one sign, three by three or whatever.
Yeah.
On the private property, but your house number sign or whatever does not constitute.
Or beware a dog is exempted, or, you know.
And that's another thing on the, on the last one. Under G, you list several signs on private property, and then you go on to say, such allowed signs shall not exceed six feet in square, uh, six square feet in area.
Right.
I think that really would apply to all the signs. In other words, I would move that up to, right, directly to B. Say, the following are exempted from these regulations. All signs allowed under these exemptions shall not exceed six square feet. If you, if you limit it to just G, then it doesn't really cover the other signs. Plus the fact if somebody was to allow political.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's a good point.
Rather than that, it wouldn't apply.
All right, I'll clarify that.
And, um, C two.
Yeah.
Last sentence, further, no flashing, blinking, or rotating lights shall be permitted. Do you allow moving lights? Or just, in other words, if it's moving back and forth, is that allowed?
Uh, I, I guess would be. Does he want to eliminate moving?
Well, no, I was gonna change rotating to moving.
Okay. Okay.
And, just to keep on going, under K four, that's on the first sheet, A. Is there a reason why you're, this has, has to do with non-conforming existing signs. Every sign lawfully existing at the time of the adoption of these regulations may continue in existence and be maintained, but shall not be changed, and then you go.
Right.
You list a whole bunch of stuff. Why are you not saying cannot be changed in any way? Why are you listing specific ways that it?
I have no reason. I just copied this from the previous one. And, but if you would like to say can't be changed in any way, we could say that.
Well, what's the difference? Then you're getting into very subjective, what's maintenance and what's changing?
Sure.
So if I wanna repaint my sign, but I wanna change the color to blue, and it was brown, is that a change or is that maintenance? I, I'm just.
Changing it to blue or brown would be a change. Painting it again as brown would be maintenance.
What if it's not the same color brown, because they don't make it anymore, so you've gone.
No, I, no.
I mean, how, how.
This is a chunk you get into.
Deal with day to day.
That's true.
Just like North, okay, so North Star sold to be, and they're now the South Star, whatever.
Snow Star.
Snow Star.
Snow Star.
Okay, so they repainted the sign and changed the name from North Star to Snow Star. Is that a change or is that maintenance?
Even though you can't read it, it's a change, but, you know, so it would have to comply, I think.
Well, but you gotta, this is.
And it's difficult coming up with.
Stuff that you deal with day to day.
Yeah.
Would the underlying principle be that we want to eventually eliminate non-conforming signs? So what we want to be as strict as possible on that definition, so that by, over time, we will have.
And I'm fine doing that as long as that's what it says.
I think, I, I, I'm gonna give the voice a little bit the opposite, all right? My feeling is that what's gonna happen is if we say can't be changed in any way, they won't be maintained. So I, I'm gonna let them paint them. But maybe that's about it.
Can we say structurally changed, like?
Well, even if you got a piece of rotten wood.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Can you replace the rotten wood? I'd rather have them do that than, than let the sign just deteriorate because they.
But if the signs deteriorate, does the town have the right to say that sign deteriorated?
It's a pain in the neck.
It's a pain in the neck to get them to, look at the Valley Inn, it had to start physically falling down. Before they tie it down.
Yeah, they got it down.
So, I mean, that's why I'm asking this question is, down the road, these issues.
What's between maintenance and.
What's the difference between maintenance and change?
And change.
Yeah.
So, just, I don't know that you have to answer that question right now, but that's.
Well, I.
I think the difference is that's, maintenance is replicating exactly what it is.
Yeah, and then most people are gonna paint it the same color.
Yeah.
Most people are gonna repair it as is, but, but could you technically re-change the colors?
I think it's a judgment call, and no matter how you, how you define it, sooner or later, there's a judgment coming into it.
Again, I think. Because if they repaint it with hot pink, and it was green before, you know, forest green before, that's, that sign has changed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that replicate, now, you know, do you wanna get.
Should we say and be maintained in its current form? I mean, would that be a little bit more specific that, you know, that, which would imply almost that you can't change the color?
Form and color.
Well, what about replicating?
Replicate.
The current.
Sign?
Sign, the grandfathered sign, I mean.
I liked, I liked yours in form and color.
So then you could change the name from North Star to.
Plastic or something.
No, it says because you can't, you can't move it or replace it.
Right.
So you can't take the whole sign down and still be in conformity. So you can't replace the sign with another one. You can only maintain the existing sign.
But in that example, you could change the word north to snow if you had it in exactly the same color. And nothing, I mean, the appearance of the sign.
Right.
Is that what they did?
Well, I don't know. I, I mean, in this particular, that's just one of those examples of.
Well, we're not regulating message, so, yeah, sure, you could change the message.
But it stayed in its former color.
As long as it stayed in the same form and color, right, you could change the message.
Sure.
Ay, ay, ay.
No, it's a hard issue when you're trying to balance the work of the community with, with people's rights.
First thing, you gotta see the definition of form, and then all of a sudden, you get into this.
We, we should go to the former government of having a king.
Yeah, exactly. Take care of all this stuff.
Right, and assign to the king the responsibility.
But I mean, the language here, I think, is trying to get at that. I mean, really, you're just adding color to what's.
Right, we'd say it, it must be maintained in form and color, but shall not be changed in any of its dimensions, moved, replaced, right?
That's just height, what, leave all that in there.
Right, but if you, you gotta maintain it in both its current form as well as its color.
Right.
But you could, if you had a rotting piece of the sign, fix it. Yeah, I mean, that's reasonable to me.
Maybe you might change the but to and. And shall not be.
Okay.
Maintain the form and color, and shall not be changed in any of its dimensions.
Okay. All good suggestions.
Bill, do you wanna make those edits and I'll forward an update?
I'll make those edits. Is there any more? We may make the two thousand nineteen meeting. Wait till the, wait till we hold the public hearing. The last time, we had a roomful of people screaming for, well, temporary, they want temporary realty signs.
Oh, yeah.
They want realty signs, that's what they want.
Well, you're gonna have.
We allow them to have three.
Some do. Some do, some don't. Some people want realty signs, other people don't want realty signs.
Like the dog ones, dog leash ones, but we account for that, the realty signs, right?
Uh, we allow them to have three that tell you how to get to the property, temporary ones.
Right.
And then after that, if it's in a condo complex and it's not visible from the road, it's up to the condo.
Right.
I don't care what the.
If we're looking to increase sales, I think we want to, we want.
Well, the argument is that if we actually allow for sale signs, it would decrease sales. Because it makes it look like everything in town is for sale.
Good point, good point.
Well, that was the argument they made last time, as some people do.
Good point.
The, the realty people want signs for their company, but nobody else.
Nobody from out of town.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Any more suggestions? Let me have, I'll make a judgment, and we'll try one more revision, and we'll see what the attorney says, and hopefully, we'll have a public hearing, right? Because these are gonna change immensely after the public hearing.
Okay, committee reports, town core group, Wendy had to leave, so we won't have that, I guess. Any other committee reports? No? Shareary communications?
Um, not that I have, no.
Nothing in the tickle fire. Nothing in the ticker file, anybody wanna bring up anything? Have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I'll defer, aye, opposed, okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.